October 22nd. The Gabe Council, the fellow workers, please stand for the political agreement. Our status.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on the agenda will be approval of amendments in October to the second, eighth meeting.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
It has been moved in seconds to approve the minutes. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will be a statement of bill stating amount of 336,207.68. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to accept a payment of bill in amount of 336,207.68.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds to approve this statement of the bill, paid with the clerk please call. Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda will request your comments from the public. There being none, we move on to item number four, consider a motion to recess into executive session with accordance of KSA 75-431-9B2 with consultation with the city attorney regarding information which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship related to build itself that Edmondville project development agreement.
We will leave 20 minutes, and I would just note that we'll have both Tyra Ellsworth and Tom from Springsteen witness to the City Attorney.
So moved with the return time of 7:25.
Second?
It has been moved in seconds to go into recess and, of course, the above reasons, add the return at 7:25. Would the clerk please call?
Schreiber? Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
We're in that ride. I finished prizes. Move the return to regular session.
And motion in seconds to return regular session. Would the clerk? Each cabinet? All right. Let's see clerk. There has been a motion in seconds to return regular session. Would the clerk please call? Schreiber?
Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
And who made the motion in seconds? Mr. Garrett made the motion in seconds. Schreiber, or second?
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, before we get, I know the next item on your agenda is a presentation regarding the stack that I'm sure that will run this red from cover to cover.
Oh, yeah.
But before we do that, we do have John Monson with us tonight, and I thought I'd give him an opportunity just to kind of bring us up to date on his side of all of this if he wanted to. So, John, if you have any comments or anything you'd like to just say, you've made the trip down here, and we have a meeting in the morning. You don't have to, but just wanted to give you the opportunity.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, staff, John Monson. And I'm happy to be here again to answer questions. We are working diligently with staff, and a lot of stuff to do, but I think we're making reasonable progress. And so tomorrow we have a meeting with the building department and staff to look at preliminary plan submissions and how we can navigate through that process. I can tell you that we do have a franchise agreement with the Hard Rock folks, and I'm going to be going down there in the next couple of weeks for the official handoff, and we'll just keep plugging away. So, a lot to get done in a very short time.
Right. John, thank you. Thank you for being here. I know it's a fantastic ride.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was telling Mr. Ellsworth that I love coming down here because I get down here at 4:30 and then I go play golf at Sunflower.
Ah, yeah, okay.
So, beautiful, beautiful evening.
You picked the right day to do that.
I tell you what, it's the most expensive round of golf I ever had because I lost every ball that I shot into the, into either the sun or the leaves, and so somebody's going to hate it tomorrow when I go. Anyway, I love coming down here, and I'm going to do it anytime. Planning to do it a lot more.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mike?
Well, with that, Mayor, we will ask Tyra Ellsworth to come forward. Kind of the purpose of this is that these documents ultimately is what the council will approve as part of a ordinance. So, there's a ordinance, and then with that ordinance, there's these additional documents that are in there, which include this trust indenture, the bond purchase agreement, the continuing disclosure agreement, a tax certificate needed for those items, and then a preliminary official statement, which that is the official document that goes out to the market for pricing. Typically, in the week of those, we're doing GO bonds, and they're generally, they're bid, and then, you know, we come back to the council on a particular date, and we say the most invested bid is ABC Company, and here you go. This process is a little different because they're privately placed in the way that they process. But I wanted to give an opportunity just to highlight these documents. I know there's a lot to them. Obviously, the legal councils have got all this, but just, again, so we understand this process publicly, and just highlight them. And if there are questions tonight or later on, we'll certainly answer those. I do know they're quite lengthy, and I know that I've spent a lot of time reading with Tyra and Tom and lots of other people.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, council, and thanks, Mike, for teeing this all up. He promised that, or I promised Mike that I would try not to put you all to sleep this evening, so I'm just going to briefly touch on, you took the documents as a reference in the bond ordinance. So, the way the process works is, once we're ready, once we have all the documents prepared with all the numbers in them and sort of all the pieces are coming together, all the pieces that John alluded to being worked on behind the scenes right now, then we expect to be back before you as a council to consider and approve three different bond ordinances. And so you'll have a bond ordinance for the TIP bonds, a bond ordinance for the TGT bonds, and a bond ordinance for the CIDE bonds. And each of those takes a separate vote of the council. But once that's done, once the ordinance is approved, in that ordinance, the execution of these other documents that Mike discussed is authorized. So, you would consider an approval of bond ordinance, and that would provide approval to the mayor and to Zach and staff to execute the necessary documents, basically this entire stack here that Mike's been waiting around and that I have here and that was included in your packet this evening. One of those stacks for each of the separate series of bonds, sort of describing how that works. And in a nutshell, the primary documents are the preliminary operating statement, which contains a description of the project and some of the numbers behind the project, what the project could be, who Mr. Monson is, who your partners are, and just talks about, basically, it's a marketing piece, but it's important that that marketing piece be very specific and accurate. But it's a marketing piece that DORD, as the underwriter of the bond issue, can take out to the marketplace and solicit bids from prospective purchasers of the bonds. So, that's one large stack or subset in this stack of documents. One thing I should mention is the preliminary official statement is critical that it's accurate, and it's critical that everything that needs to be said about the project, nothing more, nothing less is included and described in that document. So, I know that you all are getting pinkerys left and right about how things are going with the project, what the status is, what's the deal, and I would urge caution in your responses to those questions, really in terms of speaking to the market, in terms of providing information to anybody that might buy the bonds. That information should come from the preliminary official statement itself, not from your Twitter account, not from, you know, your remarks off the cuff at the Chamber of Legend. I know there are a lot of people asking for a lot of info, but if you can, you know, let them know if it's appropriate. If it's a specific information that they're asking, a specific bit of info that they're asking for, and it relates to the structure of the deal or some aspect, it should be in this preliminary official statement, I'd say, and there will be a preliminary official statement prepared, best where to look for those answers. So, that's the operating document. The second major document is the trust indenture, and that's basically a pledge by the city of the revenues that are supporting each series of bonds. So, the trust indenture for the TIP bond, the example that's in your packet, talks about what the revenues are, the sales tax and the property tax, and identifies those as the sources of repayment for the bonds. It contains details about the bonds, how quickly you can pay them off, what the interest rates are, how things work, the connection with the bonds themselves. So, the trust indenture is essentially the city's promise to pay the debt from these specific revenue streams. There's also a bond purchase agreement, a continuing disclosure agreement, and for a couple series, a tax certificate. So, briefly, those three separate documents, the bond purchase agreement is the city's agreement with DORD as the underwriter for the city to sell and deliver the bond certificates to DORD on the closing date in exchange for payment by DORD to the city or on the city's behalf of the purchase price for the bonds, and talks about sort of the contract between the parties for what the city has to do and what DORD has to do in order for that sale to occur. The continuing disclosure agreement is basically the city's commitment to update the market with information similar to the information that was in the preliminary official statement, the marketing statement. After the bonds are issued periodically, basically every six months, the city will provide an update of the revenues that is collected. So, prospective purchasers of the bonds or people that have bought the bonds already know how the project is doing. That's difficult for a transaction like this, and so the city will be working with the trustee, in this case Commerce Bank, to update the market, providing reports on the revenues that have been received. And the final item to note is the tax certificate. The TIP bonds and a portion of the CIDE bonds are being offered on a tax exempt basis, and the city will provide at the closing of the bonds a certificate that basically says what they can do and what they are agreeing not to do with the proceeds of the bonds in order to maintain the tax exempt under federal law. So, that's probably a lot more than you wanted to know, but that's, in essence, the purpose of each one of those documents that's authorized by each of the bond ordinances.
So, that was an overview of this.
Exactly. That was a walk through that big stack.
And understand, that is just one of the three issues. So, we, we may do by reference the packet purposes going forward. I mean, they'll be available if we can, if we can. You'll certainly have the ordinance in itself, and we can make the others, you know, certainly available to the public, and we'll get with you. I mean, I don't necessarily like to run off, you know, 500 pages or, or, you know, do all these things any more than anybody else, but it felt like tonight was the night to at least make sure you had an opportunity to see them and review them and carry forward your makes. You know, quite honestly, you read these things so many times, you might, we might all miss something that seems very, very intuitive or basic, and somebody says, "What is that?" You know?
Yeah.
But, I mean, we found an address that was, you know, we don't even know where it came from. Somehow it got in there, whether it was from someone else or what, you know? So, that just, that happens. Try to catch on.
So, that's hopefully a helpful review throughout the process and what's been going on behind the scenes over the last couple of months. So, happy to answer any questions.
You did a good job walking through it.
We will have a, I think, you know, likely, we will have maybe a special meeting between now and our next meeting because we have that three-week period in there, and it's on a Tuesday, our next meeting is on Tuesday, or it's a Monday, it's a holiday, but we'll get back to the council on that. Again, it's somewhat contingent upon having certain documents available to complete this process, and so we don't want to set a date for that really when that is, but I would at least say we expect that's a potential difference. We now in the hoot of thinking that we could have a special meeting.
Good. Right. Thank you, Adam. Now, we're going to move on? Okay. Next item is to consider ordinance number 1008, amending chapter 15, public ways and property incorporating regulations related to franchise requirements within the city of Edmondville.
Recently, we were, we were reached out by, I think it's MCI.
MCI Metro.
MCI Metro to provide service and power of the city. They're a telecommunications provider. As you know, we have franchises with other organizations, with the gas company, AT&amp;T, et cetera, and so we started in that path, and to be quite honest with you, as we were doing that, we realized that we had never really, well, statute allows for this, and we had done this, we'd never really codified anything within our local code. So, the city attorney suggested that that's something we needed to do, and so tonight we really have two pieces to that. One is adding a section to chapter 15, public ways and public property, which is where we put things that involve any of our public property, public rights of way, that lays out what the requirements are to obtain a franchise and maintain a franchise agreement in the city. And the second item, which is ordinance number 1009, basically the men's are fee schedule that would have a $1,000 permanent application fee, which offsets the cost of the city attorney and staff for doing this. The $1,000 of the bridge state would be across the, you know, across the area for this type of work. And so, those are the two items. We're certainly happy to answer those. The city attorney obviously reviewed this and it's worked on this. Yeah, so there's two motions, one for ordinance 1008 that amends chapter 15, and one for the ordinance 1009 that amends the fee schedule.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 1008.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds to adopt ordinance number 1008. Would the clerk please call?
Schreiber? Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay. Consider resolution 2018-25 setting the date to conduct a public hearing regarding a dangerous and unfit structure located at 1516 South 94th Street.
Mayor, members of the council, we come before you tonight with this resolution 2018-25 of setting dates to conduct a public hearing on a building that we believe to be dangerous and unfit. Just some quick reference, the building is located at 1516 South 94th Street, and it was completely damaged on August 22nd of this year as part of a fire. While the property wasn't sure, there has been no movement by the insurance company to either remove the structure or replace the structure. There may be issues between the insurance company and the owners of the property as to whether they will or will not pay, but that's between them. But it has created an unsafe building, we believe, and in order to move forward with that, we have to first call a public hearing. It's outlined in the ordinance that's, or in the memo that's before you. Basically, the first step of that is, is that the city council calls this public hearing to the resolution process. We will then notify all the property owners and anybody that has interest in this. We'll have to do a little title work to get all known. Anybody that has leaned against the property, their ownership of the property, they'll all be notified. We will then come back before you and have a public hearing, at which time we will provide you with factual evidence as to whether or not that, why we believe the structure is dangerous, and then the city council makes an determination. If you determine it to be a dangerous and unfit structure, then we will give the property owner some opportunity to correct that that is set by the council. And then if they fail to do that, then the city has the right to go in, demolish the structure, and make the area safe, and then we file lien against the property. Unfortunately, it costs money, but that is the process. If you've been by that property, you'll clearly see that it, you know, has an open basement, a number of walls that burned down, the ones that are left standing aren't structurally supported in any way, and so that is an issue. One thing that we will be doing, we believe that we should, is we're going to get some temporary fencing that will at least go across the driveway areas, a fence around the property to help secure that property, and it's a few hundred dollars, I mean, $600 for $300 for $350 for six months at least to, you know, try to help secure that with the fencing that's there and others. We don't have to do that, but, you know, it certainly isn't a nice word when you think a danger to the public. And so, that is our action for this evening.
Mike, in the motion, shows this December 10th date to include in the motion?
I'm, excuse me, I, should the date of the hearing be included?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It is in the, it's in the resolution, so.
Hey, so I got a question. So, are the homeowner, are they responsive to anyone?
I would refer to chief, he's had the most.
Have we, have we sent certified, and do we know where they're at?
We have posted the property codes, we have sent certified letters, we have contacted the daughter, who, we got her phone number, and she, we can indicate that her mother will contact us, but she will not give us her direct phone number or the location of what she's saying. So, we have not been in contact.
I'm not certified, Mel didn't have got to them.
Well, they've been, they've been notified. We have sent a certified.
Why didn't they grant anybody now?
Have they picked up certified now?
Well.
I mean, you have to.
It has not come back.
You can't read, you can't.
It has not come back to us as of this date. And they were aware of the, of the.
I wonder what the, we don't have any idea for the daughter or anything. What's the, what's more on?
Not that I'm aware of unless you.
Well, earlier this spring.
We're not, we're not going to disclose it.
Okay. Earlier this spring, there was some financial concern about their mother staying in the house. We knew that from our codes issued, the father and counsel writing, and my brother's ever saw.
So, what was it, or we're not disclosing what?
I think that there's any criminal case in this matter. Is that what we're following, I guess?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-25.
Second.
It has been moved in seconds to adopt resolution 2018-25. Would the clerk please call?
Schreiber? Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you all. Okay. Consider resolution 2018-25 setting the date to conduct a public hearing regarding a dangerous and unfit structure located at 1516 South 94th Street.
Mayor, members of the council, we come before you tonight with this resolution 2018-25 of setting the date to conduct a public hearing on a building that we believe to be dangerous and unfit. Just some quick reference, the building is located at 1516 South 94th Street, and it was completely damaged on August 22nd of this year as part of a fire. While the property wasn't sure, there has been no movement by the insurance company to either remove the structure or replace the structure. There may be issues between the insurance company and the owners of the property as to whether they will or will not pay, but that's, that's between them. But it has created an unsafe building, we believe, and in order to move forward with that, we have to first call a public hearing. It's outlined in the ordinance that's, or in the memo that's before you. Basically, the first step of that is, is that the city council calls this public hearing to the resolution process. We will then notify all the property owners and anybody that has interest in this. We'll have to do a little title work to get all known. Anybody that has leaned against the property, their ownership of the property, they'll all be notified. We will then come back before you and have a public hearing, at which time we will provide you with factual evidence as to whether or not that, why we believe the structure is dangerous, and then the city council makes an determination. If you determine it to be a dangerous and unfit structure, then we will give the property owner some opportunity to correct that that is set by the council. And then if they fail to do that, then the city has the right to go in, demolish the structure, and make the area safe, and then we file lien against the property. Unfortunately, it costs money, but that is the process. If you've been by that property, you'll clearly see that it, you know, has an open basement, a number of walls that burned down, the ones that are left standing aren't structurally supported in any way, and so that is an issue. One thing that we will be doing, we believe that we should, is we're going to get some temporary fencing that will at least go across the driveway areas, a fence around the property to help secure that property, and it's a few hundred dollars, I mean, $600 for $300 for $350 for six months at least to, you know, try to help secure that with the fencing that's there and others. We don't have to do that, but, you know, it certainly isn't a nice word when you think a danger to the public. And so, that is our action for this evening.
Mike, in the motion, shows this December 10th date to include in the motion?
I'm, excuse me, I, should the date of the hearing be included?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
It is in the, it's in the resolution, so.
Hey, so I got a question. So, are the homeowner, are they responsive to anyone?
I would refer to chief, he's had the most.
Have we, have we certified, and do we know where they're at?
We have posted the property codes, we have sent certified letters, we have contacted the daughter, who, we got her phone number, and she, we can indicate that her mother will contact us, but she will not give us her direct phone number or the location of what she's saying. So, we have not been in contact.
I'm not certified, Mel didn't have got to them.
Well, they've been, they've been notified. We have sent a certified.
Why didn't they grant anybody now?
Have they picked up certified now?
Well.
I mean, you have to.
It has not come back.
You can't read, you can't.
It has not come back to us as of this date. And they were aware of the, of the.
I wonder what the, we don't have any idea for the daughter or anything. What's the, what's more on?
Not that I'm aware of unless you.
Well, earlier this spring.
We're not going to disclose it.
Okay. Earlier this spring, there was some financial concern about their mother staying in the house. We knew that from our codes issued, the father and counsel writing, and my brother's ever saw.
So, what was it, or we're not disclosing what?
I think that there's any criminal case in this matter. Is that what we're following, I'd guess?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt resolution number 2018-25.
It has been moved in seconds to adopt resolution 2018-25. Would the clerk please call?
Schreiber? Yes.
Stein?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kayhar?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is to consider authorizing a ward to bid to Conrad Fire Equipment related to assistance to verify their strand for personal protective equipment. Keep with them.
Mayor, council members, we spend more federal government funds, and we were successful with two grants this year. This is the last of the two grants, this was the micro of the two, for the $16,612. This was purchasing eight sets of firefighter turnout coats and protective pants. As part of the recommendation for you tonight is to award a bid to Conrad Fire Equipment for $16,612.24 to purchase the eight sets of protective bottoms and coats. I just have a quick question. It's probably a really simple answer. On the process of not getting outside, or other bids, it just says that it'd be, if it's practical, it could be just, and I was just wondering if you could describe how it was better, like, is there a benefit to having it all together instead of by different sources?
Usually, the vendor gives us a little bit of a discounted price because he's already taken a price tag for the truck purchase as well. And then because we're sitting there and buying so much bulk of it as well, incorporating it on other prices, so such as buying a truck with 1,000 feet of five inch hose, another 600 feet of four inch hose, another 400 feet of extra three quarter hose, you know, a lot of that allows him to sit there and get skinny on his commission prices, so it reduces the prices for us because he's making the commission on sale of the truck. So, it allows it because it's going to the same single source provider in Springfield. And when the truck comes out of the plant, goes to Springfield, have a lot of the material installed there. Some of it's already been installed right there instead of us trying to get it from here, now shoot it down to Springfield and vice versa. So, some of the freight stuff will be fixed in the process area.
Put it all under the same warranty?
As in, well, fire hoses only got a certain warranty. Nozzles have got a certain warranty. I mean, it's not all covered in the same style truck warranty. However, new equipment has a limited warranty to it on some items. So, a lot of that's filled out with the warranty manufacturer currently coming in. So, we're conscientious of what a warranty, new fire hose is 12 months, a nozzle, bar, if you don't burn it up in the fire, it's about two years for manufacturer to defend. You know, those type of items, we keep because we have to account for all those records if we go through.
Does that mean that this equipment, the loose equipment, will be already on that truck when it's delivered?
Most of it will be on that truck when it's delivered.
They still have to buy some of that anyway.
Yes, sir. And you know, there's some loose equipment that's on a truck that you have to have when you take delivery of it from the manufacturer. And there's some of this required for it to meet an NFP requirement soon as it hits the streets. A lot of this is what's required by NFP when it hits the streets. However, you know, it's easier to have it done and a lot of it installed in Springfield. So, when it shows up here, it's just done that way, ready to go.
I think they have a benefit, so, I mean, they install, so they've installed something. So, they're screwing a hole into the truck or whatever to mount something.
That's kind of what I'm seeing.
And so, there's a problem. We have one place to go to.
They've got to know how to put it on.
Oh, well, you took the truck to, you know, to this other vendor, and they're the ones that put the mounts in, and oh, you know, this wire is bad because they did this, and you play that game of who's responsible. So, there's, it's hard to put a price tag to it, but there is some value to having that single vendor. And we've done that on some of our, you know, bigger trucks and things like that.
That's what they do.
You know, have, or buy it all and put it all on the truck, even though it may come from different sources.
Need one finger of one person, and one person make the phone call to him and say there's a problem.
Yeah.
I don't know exactly how to make a motion, but I'll try it. I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to expend $45,000, not to exceed $45,000 on the loose equipment that's needed for the new fire truck. Is that good?
And it is from the special sales tax. Part of the reason we note that is our financial policy says that we expend dollars from that.
To be taken from the special sales tax.
Thank you.
So, I have a question. Is that price, I mean, that's their hard number, it's done, right?
Yes, sir.
So, if there was something, I mean, that you decided you wanted to, something else added on to it that cost a hundred more dollars, I mean, where would that?
Well, we left the...
Five hundred, okay. So, there is some room in there.
We left the limit in there in case. Because there's a couple of items, like you talked about, like this piston, that, we're talking about moving it over. So, there's some of those items, we know there's a little, so we rounded it to the 45. It was, it was like 43 in change.
About 42.
Yeah. And so, we left.
Because I just didn't want it to be at that number, and then something pop up, and then we'd rather add another thousand or two to be saved. Sort of like we worked out that cushion.
We've got that cushion, and then some things the council's been so gracious to, I can also feed out of the normal operating budget as well, too.
Second.
It has been moved in second to the city manager to question the purchase of equipment associated with acquisition of a Ferrari HD 77 ladder truck through the special sales tax fund, not to exceed $45,000. Would you clerk please call or?
Schreiber?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Kahr?
Yes.
Malo?
Yes.
Mike?
Just a couple of quick things. We have a lot of projects going, obviously, the South project is the big one, but we continue to have activity in the, you know, in the industrial park that will be coming onto the agenda with the council in the near future too, related to IRBs and those types of things. So, you'll see some of those coming over the next couple of months. We'll have, not too far down the road, we'll have the budget amendment approval process for the 17 budget. I'm not sure what, if any adjustments will happen to happen with that process. We'll be getting that out there. The only other thing I have is, as I said earlier, our next meeting is technically November 12 because that falls on Veterans Day by ordinance. It moves to the next working day, November 2nd. So, the reason of that is, we will advise you of any special meeting that may be needed.
Will you send us an email out reminding us about the...
Yes.
About the...
Yes.
Just, yeah, just a couple of items, and mostly just to point out, a couple changes coming in the lobby. You'll notice we've got a couple additions of the TIBLO talk available in the lobby now. Those are available free to the public. The next couple of weeks, we'll be meeting with Kansas City, open to the Kansas City Public Library, and we're going to be launching a Texas checkout mini library that's going to have mostly younger kids and middle-aged items to, for them to check out using an app on their phone. And then Von Trent has got their ongoing holiday drive, and they're taking donations. And we've got some items in the laundry that, or areas in the lobby you can donate to. So, keep an eye out for that. And then tomorrow before the end of the week, I'm going to be reaching out to all of you to get some shirt sizes. We're going to be ordering some city polos and start outfitting. The council window, that in the past, we have done a while ago, so we'll get that going again. And that is it.
Chief.
We'll be participating in Truck or Treat. We'll have you down there, and one of our sergeants, Patrick Johnson, will be down there. He's done that in the past. Tom Forme as well has done it. So, we'll be down there. Just pay attention to the railroad closing. There's going to be a lot of work starting tomorrow, tomorrow, Wednesday. So, there'll be three closed tomorrow, and then the, then they'll go, so the 9th Street will be open, and then Wednesday, the 9th Street will be closed. We're doing a lot of work, and it will start up today to get that done. So, that's what's going on.
Thank you. Keep with it.
Again, we'll be Truck or Treat, along with police officers. Also, next Wednesday night, Trick or Treat time. The last three years, many companies have been out, along with the ambulances, crews to the neighborhoods at Trick or Treat time. So, they will be out again. Unfortunately, our costumes aren't as cool as the kids', but we do get around to be cool with fire trucks. So, most of the kids usually get kicked out of that morning in the neighborhood. So, I know while the parents are, start emailing, or the crews will be back out, so yes, you may see a fire truck out and about the city during the hours of Trick or Treat time. And it's just a little more after adult supervision out there, and some more interaction with the kids. And if it does anything, it slows some cars down, it slows some cars down. Last week, I was contacted by the ISO office that does our fire evaluation for insurance service organizations. Gave us an eight-day notice that we have an evaluation coming up on Thursday, this Thursday. So, we have been in the process of getting all of our paperwork, find it for our ISO evaluation. Last time it was done, it was done under Chief Faes, and he dropped us from seven to four, which is a pretty big substantial drop. We are looking at trying to go from four to three on this insurance inspection. We are going to sit there and petition that they acknowledge the fact that we have ordered and purchased this ladder truck, because what they write for now won't take effect until February or March of next year, and that truck will be here. So, part of Thursday, when I'm sitting there sweating with this guy, going to do all the paperwork and just find why our existence is here, we are going to fight for that expenditure already that accounts for next year's evaluation on it from there on down. So, it may take a couple of months before we hear back on what our final evaluation is. We are confident we will not drop. We'll make it down to four, but like I said, we're striving to go to that three. And then, we do have a lot of the ride-alongs from Johnson County Community College that have been working with us. They will do with this until about the middle point of December, when they graduate from fire academy over there. They are the ones that you may see riding as a fourth person on the bumper. They're riding equipment different, uniformed, top is red, as soon as they are college students. Couple of them now caught a couple of fires in the past between Hudson Bar and Springs on Friday. So, there's 24 in the fire academy class, and it's fall class, and eight of them have signed into ride-along with us. We're only behind a length of the number of students that are looking to ride. So, it's a new program we started this year, work with community colleges. So, we're kind of excited that we've got, one, that opportunity, and two, that number of students that are going to come over here to Edwardsville and highlight what we do over here and come along, ride-along. And like I said, you know, we had the first one come through. We had called to go over to Six Bar and Springs on a fire, and the next thing you know, we got another fire, and we got another ride-along with us on. So, they're kind of getting some work. And then, coming into the next month's council, will be a, another ordinance to kind of sign into some mutual aid for the Kansas Wild and Task Force opportunity with us and the Kansas City Council, the fire departments, the Johnson County Fire Departments, as part of the Wild and Task Force that I will send out to the briefing on through the email, through the web, and give you some more information on for the brief on how we're doing.
Thank you. Do you have any public work?
Yes, just a few public work things. I need to go out since I mentioned anything about code enforcement. I just kind of want to give you a little recap on code enforcement this year. Today, we have closed 275 cases, and codes currently has 300 other cases. So, I think we're actually doing a really great job in code enforcement this year in our little town. I see great progress. I know some of the police officers have, now that, you know, a couple of works, that things have, you know, really improved a little bit. So, I just wanted to go over that, you know, actively engaging our community. A lot of those are courtesy letters, or just reaching out and communicating to residents where it's allowable and what's not. Then the other item is our 2018 street servicing project kicked off last week. As many as you know, many of you know, 100 Street was done last week. So, that's about 95% really of our project this year. We have about five patches left. The project really doesn't officially wrap up until about Thanksgiving. So, the contractor has about five weeks to come back and finish our patches first. And then I'll also come back and do some little ditching on 100 Street, clarify the ditching first. But, so, maybe you don't get on that. Please take a ride up there because it's drastically improved. Yeah, a little, actually, it's going to come down, starts to grow. So, it's quite an improvement. So, thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
I was just going to add a couple of things about the franchise ordinance that you just passed. It doesn't change any way that we do things. It helps us negotiate with those outside entities. One of the biggest things they look at is whether we are being competitively neutral among those entities. And so, when we have it written down what our processes and expectations are, it helps us to make sure that we are treating everybody fairly. And the only two things that are kind of in there that are new are the application fee, and the other one is a franchise application, which is on a forms approved by a city clerk, which allows us to have all of that contact information. It can be so difficult as we go down the road sometimes with franchises, and be very specific about what their intent is and what they're interested in. And so, it kind of puts them out there a little bit more that they're going to work with us and helps us in negotiating with them.
Thank you. Nice to have your work from here.
Yeah.
Is Dave ever here?
I was feeling bad.
Okay, we were used to Dave saying...
No, there was one meeting, the mayor didn't ask, "Okay", and he...
No, I seriously did. I just blew him off, and I've got a comment. Get after it. Okay. Jeff, we'll start with you.
I've been on 100 Street, and it is phenomenally different than it was a couple of weeks ago. The truth, they did a really nice job. I was surprised to have quit. They were only in there a week, weren't they?
They were. They were like a jump horse.
Yeah.
Less of this press.
Yeah, it's very nice. That's all I have.
I just want to thank the fire chief again for saving us tax money and getting another grant passed. It looks like it saved us over $15,000, and every bit is a long way. So, that's something that I just...
Here. I'll say the same thing on that. Also, I had mentioned, we're having a election. We're going to have voting machines over there, too. Maybe see about striking that mark.
Be done next week.
Yep, next week. And this will be done.
I didn't know 100 Street was done. Last time I drove by, I thought, "I haven't done anything up here yet." Now that I've done, I'll be there.
Faster, maybe people here than the striking people here. So, it'll be ten weeks we'll be working with the striking people, and...
Schedule for Saturday, Sunday.
Chief, thanks for everything, totally. Thanks for the problem. Harvey?
I'll agree with everybody else, and hope the mayor gets to feel better.
Me too. Jeff?
Nothing.
Okay, I really don't have anything to add, except thank you all very much for your council's work, staff's work. Looking forward to deciphering all this. Enjoy it.